Okay, we're gonna call the regular city council meeting to order Monday, August 9th, 7:00 PM. Roll call?
David Paradise.
Nicole Andrioff.
Kirby Moynah.
Tom Marslick.
Sam Solars.
Jessica Bonneywell.
Jared Bogie.
Pastor Ryan is not available tonight, so we will be skipping invocation and going to the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll second. Further discussion on the motion? Councilmember Solars?
Aye.
Councilmember Marslick?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Councilmember Andrioff?
Yes.
Councilmember Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Approval of the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Further discussion on the motion? Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes 5-0. Issuance of, issue of, issuance and sale of general obligation bond, series 2021A.
We have Tammy Umdahl here with us from Northland Securities Group.
Mayor City Council Tammy Umdahl with Northland Securities. Northland Securities is serving as underwriter on the sale of these bonds. This morning, I'm gonna report on the results of the pricing and working with your city staff and the municipal advisor to the city. Nine million eight hundred and eighty-five thousand bonds were priced this morning, and tonight you have an agenda item to award the sale of these bonds. With respect to the details of the bonds, as the council is aware, is being issued to finance street and utility improvements, and you've had several of these meetings now with me before you as you prepared for this issuance this evening. I would note, and great news, and I'm sure the council has heard, as part of the process, we recommended that the city seek a rating on these bonds. Oftentimes, cities consider that cities have ratings, and that's not actually the case. Bonds have ratings. And Standard and Poor's upgraded the city's rating from double A minus to double A. That's a higher rating. And what that means is that the interest rate, the final interest rates that the city will be paying on these bonds is lower because of that upgrade. If you had a chance to read the report, it speaks to the strength of the city's financial management, the strength of your financial reserves, meaning the health of your city funds, because that rating really reflects an outside opinion on the city's ability to pay bonds back. So, kudos to the city, and that's not an easy undertaking with respect to getting an upgrade, especially in the middle of a pandemic. We're just not seeing a lot of those. So, congratulations. Which brings me to the results. The final true interest cost, which is the rate that we use to compare sales, 1.77% for those bonds. So, great results in the market today, and I see Jessica nodding as well. So, with that, Mayor City Council, I could go into more detail, but I will close my comments and stand for questions. And if there are no questions, then there is the resolution for you to consider this evening. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to pass resolution number 2021-23.
I'll second.
Further discussion on the motion for the issuance of the bond? Councilmember Paradise?
Aye.
Councilmember Andrioff? Councilmember Marslick?
Aye.
Councilmember Solars?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, Mayor City Council.
Thank you.
You. Mr. Jim and Ms. April Herzog?
4671, County Route 12 South, Montrose. April and Jim Herzog. We'd like to know why we haven't had any communication about the current situation that we've been talking about, the backyard, the retaining wall, the erosion of soil. We've heard nothing since the meeting.
Just curious if anybody's got any insight on any part of that yet, at all?
Jared?
We just don't want it to drag on some months.
Sure. So, as I mentioned, we did meet out on site. We did, you did keep it along with a couple council members after that, you know, when we left. We're gonna discuss options and develop a plan moving forward. Subsequent to that, I did have a conversation with Ms. Herzog, and she indicated that she thought that there was potentially another solution. And I guess ultimately, I'm proud of you for the discussion, the meeting, and how we'd like to proceed with anything at the regional park.
So, at this time, there is no discussion between anybody about the meeting or what to do next? Because at that meeting, we were told we wouldn't hear from you the rest of that week, but the following week I would hear back from somebody, and we haven't heard anything. That's been, what, three weeks?
I believe the discussion we had afterwards was about possibly extending the wall another 10, 12 feet to the potential driveway access, and then extending the rock towards the gardens. And then you said there's another possible solution that you had in mind?
Well, we've had time to discuss that from now, you know, from then until now. I'd first like to know why we haven't been contacted back, because without communication, we don't solve any problems. And this has been drug out for years. I'm tired of coming up to the council meeting for it, because every time we come up, we have to pay a sitter, you know? So, you're costing us money, and that's not fair to us. We didn't cause the problem. It was the city who didn't secure their side so that ours went eroded. And I'd like to know what kind of plan you guys have or are going to put in place now so we can just solve the problem, and then we won't have to discuss it anymore.
Any thoughts? I, I thought the best solution that we'd come up with was extending it another 10, 12 feet, but if that's not what you see as the best solution...
I didn't say that.
I, I just...
No, I didn't say that. And I'm not even gonna go into what I discussed with Jared, because nobody called me back. So, if that's what you're gonna do, we, we just need a plan going forward. We need our yard to stop eroding into the park. We've lost all our grass around the fence area where I've got pictures just a couple years ago. It was still full of grass. When they put that fence in, it was grass, thick grass. It was the thickest grass in the yard to mow. And now there's nothing, because the black dirt is eroding away into the park. We need our yard fixed. We need it to stop eroding. What's the plan?
What are your thoughts, Jared?
Like I mentioned, last time I, it was about two, three weeks ago that I spoke with Ms. Herzog, and she indicated that she had met with a contractor and had a potential secondary solution. And I guess my, my recommendation would be if that contract is provided a quote, we should review it, and...
Wasn't up to me to get a quote?
No, we didn't get any kind of quote.
No, I just needed verification on what has gone on, what has been done, and he provided that. And what I could do at this point to stop it from continuing and to get back our yard that we had. So, that's why I had that.
What was their possible solution?
Well, see, that's, that's it. You guys had no conversation with me, even though I had talked to Jared about it. There is no communication. At this point, I wanna know what you guys are gonna do, what you came up with, because you had to have been talking about something all this time. It's been three weeks. You know, it's not fair to us as a homeowner to keep doing this over and over again. We didn't cause the issue. But we wouldn't have an issue if our yard wasn't eroding, right? You wouldn't be hearing from us.
So, do we think that extending it the 10 to 13 feet like Jared mentioned, and then adding the rock down to the garden is, I mean, I, I want this finalized as much as you do, okay?
Yeah, I believe you're right.
I mean, I like, I like seeing you guys every time, but I mean, I'd like to get a resolution here, so...
You'd rather just see us in passing on the path or something, right?
Oh, no. I mean, come up here. But, I mean, if that's, if that's what we're looking at here is extending it out 10 to 13 feet and adding some rock, and, I mean...
What about the black dirt back in my yard?
That's part of the black dirt.
So, I can grow grass again. I have no problem watering the grass, but I shouldn't have to replant the grass.
We would need more...
Here's the thing, though, on your side, you have to establish that grass. It was never established, and that's why our yard is melting away, because your side isn't stopping it. You don't have an established top on your soil. And until you do that, our yard is gonna continue to erode away. So, it takes work on both sides. I'm willing to water, but I'm not willing to pay for it, because we didn't cause it. But you guys have to be willing to water your side and get the grass established. And it will take a while. It's gonna take like two years to really establish that grass. What they did the first time around, didn't establish it. They never did anything, and then they never mowed it. If you fix the erosion, that hill will be fine.
It's once stopped and stopped well. Because there's a little bit of seed that was thrown out originally.
Was never watered or taken care of, so it didn't establish. It was let to go into seed, and the roots got weaker as it got taller.
There's some real strong weeds along the fence line there.
So, can we come up with some kind of plan on how to fix this?
Well, I mean, after going out there, I mean, I thought that we had a good idea of, of adding to the existing, adding more rock. We just had to figure out, you know, talk amongst everybody else on this as well. And, and now I'm hearing, you know, you want more grass, too. That's, that's not what we talked about when we were out there. We talked about stopping the erosion.
That would stop the erosion.
Okay. Now, you're asking us to now water and plant grass, like...
Your side?
You said on your side, though.
I'm asking you to...
I'm, I'm trying to clear, I'm trying to, I'm trying to clarify.
We will water it and take care of it after it's put in, but we shouldn't have to add more dirt topsoil, because we didn't cause the erosion, and we shouldn't have to reseed it. If you want pictures of what it looked like a couple years ago when the fence was first put in, I would gladly give them to you, because it is bright green and thick.
Yeah. Because I know we also had an issue with one, one of the fence posts that I know that we were gonna look at even harder.
Well, there's part of the fence that's sitting right on the dirt, in the dirt. You know, I mean, the fence has issues, but that's a different day.
I just wanna make sure we're, we're clarifying everything that we need to get done, so that you aren't coming back every month. That's what I'm trying to do right now.
The fence is gonna be an issue, but I really just want the yard fixed right now. I mean, you guys have seen the fence. You know it's gonna be an issue. It should have been a metal fence from the start, no maintenance. But that's not how it went down. So, we just need to pick up and move on from now.
Yeah, eventually, I see that your fence is gonna be...
Rattening. It is.
It'll be an issue down the road here, but, yeah. But for now, yeah, to get the grass started again.
It won't stay without a thick grass on the topsoil.
For sure.
Really, the only problem I have with that would be the watering at this time.
Well, I mean, I think it'd be smart to...
I'm not asking you to do this.
Put grass seed down now.
Okay.
Because this year, we know it's a bad year for it.
I just wanted to clarify that.
But next year, or maybe you could work, look into winter seed sowing to cut down on a little bit of the watering, but it's got to be maintained by Public Works. Because right now, it's not even mowed or weed whipped back there. They just mowed this past, or last week, after Johnny planted, they hadn't mowed it all over around the sunflower, or weed whipped behind the fence, or anything like that, but I did recall almost...
We didn't do any of our parks either. Nothing was growing except a few weeds.
Actually, they mowed, they mowed the soccer field, and they mowed the garden area every week almost.
No, they didn't.
And one week, they mowed the soccer field twice.
Right. But the rest of it, there's, there's really nothing out in that field right now.
There were plenty. You two were out there. You saw the weeds that were standing out there. There were weeds up along the back of the fence. They were there. You can still mow them. I've been mowing my yard, and it looks a lot better when you mow it and that you take the weeds down.
At least you get rid of the weeds.
They're gone now.
There was, there was a post put up on Facebook about making sure you take care of your weeds so that your neighbors aren't basically bothered by them. And I found it funny, because that field out there still needed to be mowed. You know, you can see it. When you come into town, what do you see is that big hill under that fence? And it looked like it had dust balls of weeds all over it. You were mowing across the street, or County Road 12, on the Marysville Township side where the farm fields were, but you weren't mowing your own park.
We didn't mow any parks.
Okay. But you were mowing across the street, and you were mowing part of the regional park. You just weren't mowing the sunflower part. You weren't even mowing the highway part on the regional park side.
Mowing this year has been down a lot, just in general.
I, I get that. But it's been six weeks.
But they, they are taken care of now, right?
Yes, now.
It is done.
Are we...
We need a plan about this.
What kind of a timeframe would you like to look at for the wall? I mean, I, I agree with you. I'd like to get this solved. It's been going on way too long with no one doing anything about it for a long time, and like to get this solved for you guys and, and for us. I mean, it's a problem on both sides. And the more that erodes away, the more it's gonna wear on that fence.
Well, we were told after the retaining wall went in that they were bringing black dirt in. That has never happened.
Black dirt on your side or on the other side?
No, on your side, but that has never happened.
Landscaping wasn't gonna be done till this fall, because it's so dry.
Nobody ever said that. All we were told was they're, they're still going to be bringing in dirt to fill in some spots on the park side, and it doesn't happen. There again, lack of communication.
Good to know. If you wait till fall, then at least you know.
At least tell us you're waiting till fall.
Can we drop a plan in the next couple of weeks and then email it to them for them to look at, and then get back for approval?
Yeah, absolutely. I guess the primary discussion topic here, are we gonna look at extending that wall, or are we gonna go with the alternative solution proposed by the homeowner?
Do, what was the alternate?
I didn't propose a solution. I, I didn't.
We don't know what that is, Jared.
Okay. So, we talked on the phone, and ultimately, April met with the landscape contractor and came up and reviewed the work that had been done and provided a recommendation on the backside of their, on the backside of the city's property, on their property, and recommended that COTSO be installed, seating done, some buyout rolls be installed so that a true fence ain't eroded. So...
You forgot part of that. There's, if you wanna tell him everything, tell him about the fence part, too.
Go ahead.
He said your best to just get rid of that wooden fence and put in the metal fence, and he did give him quotes for that, but...
I'd say we take the fence down and forget about it.
You can't do that one. We've got a contract. You can't do it.
I don't know if that contract's legal.
I, I say the, I say the fence conversations for a later date. Let's, let's work on...
Can we, can we, can we, can we focus on what we're talking about right now?
Yeah.
Let's stop jumping. Let's focus on what we're focusing on right now.
Let's work on the extending the wall out, and Jared, if we can get some plans drawn up, I guess.
I guess, can we look at both solutions and within the next, say, two weeks?
Make a motion to do whatever you're requesting?
Send it to them, and then your thoughts on the two of them, and then back to us, and hopefully for approval next month? Is that possible? Okay, I'll make a motion to have plans drawn up with two solutions to fix the erosion at the regional park and Herzog property.
I will second.
Further discussion on the motion? Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes 4-1. You also had on here...
The sign, the Montrose sign is missing and has been since early this year. I think I mentioned it to Jessica in March.
The county or the state does those, and we have to figure out who does it, because we don't do those.
Okay. But maybe it would be a smart thing to put the Montrose sign up.
So, we're kinda waiting to see if they would replace it with the census information, but that's not happening. So, I'll have to try and figure out who to call.
They replaced their signs already this year, and I told you that back, and they replaced them this winter. So...
Because they didn't update the population, so...
Yeah. It just would be nice to have it back up there.
Yeah, we think the city would want it up.
Yeah. It's a major road into town, so just thought we'd bring it up since I've been asking about it for a while. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mike Hoffman?
Hello. Mike, do you want to name it?
Yeah, it's Mike Hoffman. It's 145 Mindy Lane.
Mike has approached the city on assisting him with some of his penalties and late fees. They go over a span of time, but we talked about addressing the last year. So, we did look at that, and we talked about the late fees that he's accrued, and every month that he has paid his minimum, but certainly almost three times what his bill is. And he's just requesting some assistance with waiving those late fees and penalties for the last 12 months. So, the, do you want totals, or is that...
Yeah, do you have a total amount of late fees?
So, total for late fees is going to be... Yep. Total is gonna be 37129. And with that approval, Mike is prepared to pay the remainder of his balance tomorrow.
What's the remainder?
29629.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, I guess, as I understand it, Mike has been paying quite a bit more every month to try to catch on this, catch up on this thing. So, I think it'd be a good faith measure for us to go ahead and, and waive the late fee, providing that you come in and make that payment tomorrow. I'll make a motion to waive the late fee of 37129 for Mr. Mike Hoffman.
I will second. Further discussion? Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle Otto?
Michelle Otto, 205 Garfield Avenue. Good evening, mayor and council. The reason I'm here is to discuss the behaviors and outcome from last month's meeting. But before I do that, I want to point out how ironic it is that before each meeting, except for excluding tonight, you pray and ask for God's strength and guidance to help you make the best decisions for this city. And shortly after that, you voted to then disband the Park Commission and attack the chairperson for doing what you asked of the committee. Tom, you were very rude and demeaning to that chairperson, criticizing everything the commission has done these past few months. Since January, when this new committee took over, all you, as council, have been doing is nothing but go against and have gone, given zero help to these guys. Which now brings me to Kirby and Tom, that back in January of 2019, Tom, you were appointed to be the president of the EDA, and the first year you accomplished absolutely nothing. January 21st of 2021, EDA was, or I'm sorry, of 2020, EDA was approved to receive $25 per meeting, as the same as similar as to the Park and Rec and the Planning Commission. But as an added perk to the EDA, you also received lunches that were paid for by the city, which no other commission gets. February 18th of 2020, Tom and Kirby stated that they put money into the budget to hire an interim to revamp and update the city website, particularly, particularly the EDA portion of the city page. It was also stated that a job description would be put together. At the same time, Kirby recommended that the city work with the chamber to implement a business of the year program. Kirby, has that gone anywhere in the last year and a half?
Nope.
Okay. Also, in January of 2020, the EDA was given training by the Wright County Economic Development, who was Mr. Shannon Sweeney. You also discussed at that time the former Casey's building. June 16th of 2020, you discussed a brochure for the website and get the update. Deb also stated she would, she would prepare a job description for the interim position and advertise for that position, which was three months after the original discussion was had. August 25th of 2020, the brochure was updated and a sample was given, which was six months after this, this discussion and job description as discussed for this interim position. October 20th of 2020, the EDA brochure was still being worked on, as was the job description. Eight months after the original discussion, Aldi and the former Casey's building was also discussed. January 19th of 2021, still working on the former Casey's, Aldi had turned us down on numerous occasions, for numerous reasons, but still it's in the amendments and on the agenda. April 20th of 2021, the same agenda continues. Aldi, Casey's, Laundromat and Subway, as well as the EDA brochure and the job description for the interim. June 15th of 2021, no progress is still from the Aldi, but this is all Tom can seem to talk about. August 9th of 2021, no progress still from Aldi, no progress with the interim, no progress from the brochure, or the job description. A year and a half later, no progress for the Business of the Year program with the cha, with the chamber. One and a half years later, Kirby and Tom were given training, and this time, Kirby and Tom were given training by the Wright County, and in that year and a half, you have accomplished absolutely nothing. Which brings me back to January 2021, when a brand-new park committee is given a park and trail plan they knew absolutely nothing about and are given no direction but to update and give bullet points on what is needed on the parks. That information was given to the council and talked about at different park meetings. In April or May, I stood here before all of you and asked each of you to assist this commission, and, and I also reminded you that Wayne, the Public Works Director, should also be involved in this, as was Sean Derrick, our former Public Works Director. The council had a joint meeting with parks, and Kirby, our now mayor, didn't even take the time to attend that meeting or follow up with the chairperson to see if everything was okay and if anything was needed. July of 2021, park members Katie and Ashlyn, because Sylvia refused to help them out, go, they go to all of the parks, they get the bullet points like the council asked. Yes, the chairperson got it to the staff late and apologized as the chairperson. Tom was then demeaning and rude to Ashlyn and made the motion to disband the whole commission, which will vote with no further discussion, was a 5 to 0. Boom. Everything, every event that the, the community didn't attend is now gone. Why? Because you, as a council and staff, would not give assistance to a brand-new commission after only six months. Remember, Kirby and Tom, you both had EDA training as council members, and you also, all you council members also have training through the league, which because now, I find out, is embarrassing, as you have signed up for a council conduct meeting that you guys need to attend. And even after all of the training that you've all had... even after all of the training that you've all had, you have accomplished nothing in a year and a half. You still have no interim, you still have no brochure, you still have no job description, no ALDI, nothing. But you chose to disband a commission after only six months. When they were left to fend for themselves, they had no help from Wayne, no help from their liaison Nicole, and absolutely no help from Kirby or Tom, who in three years have again accomplished nothing. You should be ashamed for taking away summer splash, crafts and caroling with Santa, skate day, the food truck event, and Christmas decorating contest, the coin hunt, and recently the medallion hunt because Nicole couldn't find the time last year to do it, so the park commission did it.
Do what?
So council, I will end this portion by saying it's embarrassing to go to surrounding communities and hear people talk about how this council has hastily behaved and see that Montrose made the front page of two papers and not in a good way. Yes, I agree that Ashlyn's behavior was absolutely uncalled for, but sadly, people are more disturbed by that the council did not give any direction, did not help a 20-year-old kid in doing the park and trail plan. I would like to ask you, what improvements have you made since you have all become elected officials? Since two and a half years ago, when Kirby and Tom became council members and now a mayor, we have lost the Highway 12 redevelopment, we no longer participate in the Highway 12 Coalition, no participation in the community ed, and community ed sees no representation. So I am disappointed in the saying that you guys, I don't even know what to say anymore, but you've accomplished nothing. Where are you at with the, all your EDA stuff?
Out of those two and a half years, you were mayor for two of them.
That's right, I was. And I put you in charge of the EDA.
What did you do? There is a brochure, Michelle.
Where is it?
I did it myself.
Yep. Is it updated?
I'm sorry, I didn't mail you a copy of it, but yes.
Is it updated and on the webpage?
Updated. No, it's not on a webpage. We didn't put it on a webpage. I'm not going to sit here and be grilled by you.
I know you're not. I know you're not going to give it. You still don't have an interim, you still don't have a job description. How many, how much later? But instead, you guys took it upon yourselves after six months, each and every one of you gets training. You got EDA training, you each go to council, or I'm sorry, stuff through the league of cities, that's what it's there for.
What EDA training are you referring to?
Well, the EDA training that's in your minutes that you got from Shannon's meeting.
Shannon came in and talked to us about Tiff and Taft. That's what he came in and talked to us about.
Well, in the minutes...
It's not EDA training.
I'm sorry, then you should have verified in the minutes.
And you, you can't sit there and tell me what I've done or haven't done trying to get an ALDI into this town.
I can because I sit here every month and listen to you.
Because it's not here.
Right.
You have no idea what I'm doing between meetings.
You're right, I don't. So because when you guys come here, that is what you're supposed to do is give an update. And the only update that has been given is no progress has been made and ALDI has turned us down.
Yeah, basically.
Okay.
Again and again and again.
Right.
They didn't just turn us down and we walked away and said, forget about it.
Correct. But it's still on your agenda and it's still in your thing, the same way that you all complained that the Park and Rec had the same agenda, the same minutes, and they had six months.
It's one of the reasons we haven't had EDA meetings.
You've had years. You guys gave these guys six months.
We haven't had...
I came to you in April, April or May, I don't remember which one. I know you're not going to discuss this, Tom, because you know you're wrong. You were all wrong in what you did. You've taken away everything.
I'm not going to call you a liar to your face, but...
You can call me whatever you want.
Yeah, okay.
I've been known to be called by many things from you and it's not going to hurt my feelings today, tomorrow, or ever.
Same, same here.
So, you know, it's just, you guys have done, I don't, I don't want to be rude, but sadly, that's where it's come to. You guys have done a harm to the city. There's nothing left. You have nothing left. What are you going to do, Kirby?
About which part?
Any of it. I have the whole thing that I just, how's your Business of the Year? You've done nothing with it.
Except it was brought up?
Sorry. Since you came here, you didn't like Highway 12 when you came a council member, you didn't like the Highway 12 redevelopment, you didn't want to participate in the Highway 12 Coalition, you don't participate in the community ed, you didn't participate in the Park and Rec. I explained to you, and I knew this was sadly going to happen, being the mayor and sitting there, it's not just a title, it's a job. And it's not always a fun job, but it's still a job that has to be, you have to take time to do what's best for the city. And none of this is best for the city. So I want to know, you guys last month said that you were going to have a special meeting, which you did, I'm sorry, which you didn't. My understanding is that you're going to do something, it's, you're going to look over the bylaws and go over that, which is cool, and bring it back in September and then possibly look at it again in January. Is that correct?
I believe our discussion is to talk about what we're doing with it in September. We have all the bylaws and the park and trail plan, and we're going to decide what we're doing at that point. And we've gotten several ideas from people around the city about how they would like to see things change going forward with that.
Okay, that's good to know. So, and again, when the park commission chairperson came and asked you guys if you guys knew anything about the park and trail plan, if you could assist them, the response that was given was, it's not our job, it's your job as a commission. That's a kind of, not a full quote, but that's from Tom. So how did you expect these guys to succeed? How did you expect them to succeed and get what you wanted done when you gave no direction? You gave no help. Where were you, Wayne? Where were you in helping these? Every, you were supposed to be at meetings quarterly.
Yes, I was.
And you didn't help with anything.
I answered any question they had.
So I'm just going to go back with when Sean was with us. They took, we took that park and trail plan and we went by it page by page, along with the director, who was out there in the parks and knows everything that needs to be done. You assisted with nothing. The same thing, again, Nicole, I mean, I've known you forever and a day. What did you do to help?
The few times, you were at almost every single one of those meetings. You've also been to those meetings way longer before I even got there.
Mm-hmm.
You knew how they were conducted. Do you think that they were conducted properly?
I wasn't at the first couple that were shut down with Sylvia and sadly, what happened was you guys put Wendy in that position, which since January, since I left, Wendy has been nothing but negative towards Park and Rec. And if you don't believe me, watch her videos.
And that was before my time. I don't know what was happening before.
You had been here January of 2021.
That Wendy in Park and Rec was before I came on. I went to one meeting with her and that was called for. What happened in the beginning of that meeting needed to happen because at almost every single one of those meetings, that was the same conduct that was happening. Nothing was ever getting done, ever. It was nothing but an argument. And the few times, I mean, you're her mom.
Mm-hmm.
You were in there. You couldn't even help guide the situation. How are you expecting me to work that miracle?
I'm expecting you to say, let's work on this park and trail plan. But when, when that person, when she came to you guys, none of you were familiar with helping with that park and trail plan.
So Michelle, I did ask those questions and I did try to guide them on a meeting.
I also...
And I got shot down tremendously by your daughter and said, nope, I'm talking about this right now.
Right, they were talking...
She didn't want, she didn't want any guidance. She thought she knew it all.
Mm-hmm.
We are here to help. And if she doesn't want the help, then we need to find somebody who wants to help.
Right.
And wants to make it right.
And at the meetings that I did attend, I was not at all of them, you did assist and, you know, I thank you for that. Again, I wrote, I sent all of you an email, which is my next topic of the Fish Sunflower. None of you responded, except for you, and I thanked you again for that. But you guys don't even know the park and trail plan. How did you expect them to know it? But you know what? Anyways, whatever, it's water under the bridge, everything that's happened. I just hope that you guys, moving forward, but that's a tough thing to say because council conduct was the reason I was here, council and staff conduct. But you, Wayne, tonight, telling the Herzogs that the contract's probably not even good. It was a contract written by the city and probably our attorney.
No.
So...
It's a, it's a fence, it's a regular fence permit, which is a contract.
Which is a fence that was approved by, any contract that is done is approved by our city attorneys. So that's kind of a...
Well, they're initially approved when the paperwork is made, yes.
Yes. So that's kind of not real nice... Well, either way, it was done by the city, it was a contract by the city, and for you to kind of blurt that out is, you know, kind of unprofessional, but whatever. It is what it is. So basically, guys, I don't even know. I hope moving forward, you can get up, get somebody to volunteer, somebody to do everything that's supposed to, you know, that needs to be done, all the events, because there's nothing left. Montrose Days, they're going to struggle because they have nowhere to go. They, I mean, I'm hoping that they get volunteers.
They're going to the regional park.
Okay.
And that's been the plan.
Well, on the web, on the post that they just put, they said they have no location to go.
The plan has always been for them to go out to the regional park.
But there's nothing there.
Which there will be very soon, considering we got approved money to build our shelter out there.
Okay. Okay, so that's, so with that, where's the, we have to match that grant. And how much is that?
Two fifty?
The grant is $250,000 and we do have that much in the park fund to match it.
Okay.
So we will be... Yep.
So Jared, I think that you and Justin were a part of that, getting that grant, right? So thank you for doing that. It's been a couple of years, so...
Yeah, we've tried and we finally got it, so...
Yeah, yeah. So that's good to know. So I was hoping that somebody could at least do breakfast with Santa this year, but I don't know, it might happen. I asked, you know, if Christina, but if that would happen, but, I mean, there's money in the budget for Montrose Days.
There's things in the works. There's nothing permanent. There's nothing, it's just, there's, there's ideas out there.
Mm-hmm.
Trying to make it happen as much as possible. Obviously, we have to work with what we have to work with. So I'm hoping that this next meeting, Montrose Days meeting is productive and helping us to get that.
In September, correct? Okay. I will shoot this to you guys and I would like some answers as to where all of this is going, you know, things that you guys have been working on for the last couple of years and have made no progress on. My next item is fish sunflowers. You know that April and I came to you guys multiple times as a council to get Johnny Fish to come out here. You guys finally approved that. It took a lot to get that approved, the contract that crazily we paid $1,100 for to get, I don't know why we did that, but, I mean, it was a waste of money. Johnny's been very good in all communities. I get that it's on city property and not private property, but when, after Johnny had started plowing that field, you guys were asked to go out and look and see all the rocks and everything that were out there. I sent an email to Wendy asking what we paid to have all the rocks removed a few years back when the Army Corps was here, and I couldn't get a response for that. So April and I were out there picking rocks for Johnny. Then the field was planted. We all know that there's no rain, no water. So I reached out, I sent you all an email asking, stating, we are committed to this. We all agreed to have Johnny come out here. We all agreed that it would be a great asset to the community. Could we please just water the field? There's three hydrants out there. Johnny had his own truck. Not one of you responded, except for David. Do you guys not care when people come to town? I mean, you, I know you ain't going to respond to me because, well, it's me. And that's just something I have to take into consideration, but if, did any of you go to the sunflower fields that he had, Buffalo, Monestello, Big Lake? Yeah?
Before they were shut down?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. And you saw how busy they were, right?
Yep.
Yep. Wouldn't that have been great to have here in Montrose?
Michelle, in my email, what did I say to you about the watering issue?
You said have Johnny contact us?
Did he contact any of us? He did not.
Right, and I get that.
It's a two-way street here.
I understand that, but we as taxpayers contacted you.
And, and I...
And asked you to help.
And, and I was willing to help. And I, you, you and April obviously have that great relationship with Johnny. All it takes is for him to reach out to me.
Right, and when he's...
And he did not.
And when he's planting multiple fields...
I understand he's busy. I understand he's doing a lot.
So all we said was, can we use the hydrants and water the fields?
But I wanted to have that conversation with him and see, and see what he needed and everything. And, and if we don't have any of that, we can't move forward.
Did you reach out to him and ask him?
To Johnny?
Yes. What can we do to help you get this going?
So with that whole situation, and April and I talked about this when we were at her house, is that he had her find a singer to come and sing...
Yep.
Jolene to the field, was it, right?
Yep, we were out there.
Right, it was just a singer to sing to the...
He asked us to get somebody there and we did.
Yes, because he said the field was...
Wasn't the question, did you reach out to him?
I'm getting there. I'm, I'm, this is all part of that because he had talked to her saying the field wasn't going to make it, right? That's...
That was weeks and weeks...
Right.
...before we had reached out about the water.
He then reached out to me two days after he told her to find a singer and said, could the fire department water that? The fire department, when you sent an email out, had replied to you and said that they're not going to, there's not going to be watering of that with the, the fire hydrant, or the fire department does not have the equipment for it.
Unless directed by the council.
And when we talked to Kevin, he had said he would not recommend that.
Because, the response from Kevin was because it was not for the community. How is that not for the community? If any of you, which you two have stated, you have gone to other communities, it brings people in. What more could we do but bring people in? Would we rather have our name on the newspapers negatively, or would we rather have our name on the newspapers saying, look at Montrose? Because if any of you follow the pages, they were all waiting for Montrose to start blooming and start going. And sadly, we had to say...
Didn't you have like three other fields that just...
I'm not the only field.
Two, two.
That was four.
I mean, I'm sorry.
And I get that, but we asked and...
Right, and I understand that, but we're in the middle of a drought and I can't...
We weren't before we asked.
We, I mean, we were leading up to there. There were, there were cities that were putting in bans. And how could I sit there and say, let's throw, you know, a couple hundred thousand gallons of water on this, when people are struggling to even water their lawns at this point? I mean, I, basically, I couldn't sit there and say, okay, yeah, go ahead and throw 200,000 gallons of water on there. I couldn't do it. I couldn't have people driving by and be like, oh, look, they're just watering sunflowers. I can't even fill my pool.
But at that time, none of that was in place. No cities were in place when I reached out to you guys. But that's okay.
But we were on our way.
It's water, it's sadly water under the bridge. But so moving forward with this contract, what's your plan then? Is he committed to something next year? Are you guys going to hold him to putting the field back to the way it was, which was in worse shape than what it's in now? I mean, what, what's the plan?
I'd love to have him take a run at it for next year.
That's a discussion we need to have with Johnny Fish.
And I'd love to see where he's at.
Okay.
I don't, none of us up here wanted to see that field fail.
No.
None of us. And, and I, it kind of offends me that you kind of picture that, make it look like that's what we, that's our ultimate goal here.
Well, no, I...
Nobody wanted that.
Right, and I stated clearly that you were the only one responding to that.
Okay, that's beside the point. I don't need to, my horn tooteth here, is I asked that I needed to talk to him and he didn't want to reach out. That's an issue.
So...
Because I need to hear from him, what are the needs? What do we actually need? How much water is it? How are we going to make this happen?
Would it have been...
I need all these steps done. Then we can bring it, you know, we can talk about it and get it done.
Would it have been too much for any of you to reach out to him and say, we know you're busy, we know that you're planting many fields, what can we do as a city since we are committed to helping you? It's a two-way street, right?
It, it's been fairly one-way on our, on our ends. It took forever...
No, he came to you.
The one time, but it also, when we had the contract, it was, we, we were having a tough time getting a hold of him. So it's a two-way street. Yes, it is. But at the same time, I understand the issues that he faced over there.
There were a lot of delays upfront. And if Johnny Fish would have came to the city or the city council, instead of talking to you and April about the whole situation, we may have gotten things going a lot sooner and those sunflowers may have grown before we hit the drought. Okay? So we wasted a lot of time upfront with that and the contract, so...
Yeah, all we were asking for was for him to come to us.
Right. But like I said, it's a two-way street. And if we didn't waste the time on that contract, we wouldn't have wasted $1,100, but whatever. Thank you.
Open forum, Jim and April.
4671 County Road 12, Montrose, Jim and April Herzog. I would like to know why we are constantly abused by city staff, talked to horribly. Talked to horribly. Um, the last Park and Rec meeting I was at, Wayne yelled at me. When he was, the last one he was at, actually, I go to many.
Yeah.
Um, how is that good? I mean, you want people to come up and talk to you as a city council and, and deal with you, but when you get treated like crap and ignored. I mean, basically, this whole land thing has been going on because Wayne wouldn't come out. When is that gonna stop?
Been out there lots of times. Done everything you asked us to do.
Wayne, when we told you about the, the land moving and, and that, you had one of your employees, Coco, I believe, come out and he filled in the natural swale in the yard on our side of the fence, and we've always told you, don't come on the yard with employees.
Like I said, oh, you're one of, running our way, and you're eroding our land, too.
Uh, no.
You're, and it's not eroding from our land?
That, if, if it's-
I just, I just wanna know, what, how, why is he allowed to treat us this way, and Tom, too? I mean, seriously. It, it's not good. It's not a good look for the council. And if you want people to come up here, this is why people don't come up here.
As far as the land stuff, like I said, we're gonna get you a plan.
No, I'm not, I'm not even arguing about that.
That was, that was the first part of what you said, so I'm, I'm getting the second part. A, as far as any of the attitude or behavior that is perceived, that's something we have to deal with in a personnel setting that we can't discuss out here, but-
Do we need to file a grievance for that to happen? I mean, how does that happen?
I mean, we've talked to Jessica and, about things to get done. And usually, it's to have Wayne and, and his guys do the mowing or do whatever it is that they need to probably do.
That's city work.
And it's put off, and it's put off, and, but I truly believe that Jessica talks to Wayne and tells us that this needs to be done. And I think he just puts it off because it's us and our spot out there. I, I, that's the feeling you got, I'm sorry, but that's the way it is.
He's abrasive and harsh when he talks to me. So I will talk to Jessica before I will talk to him about a city matter.
I, I wanna know what I said to you that was offensive.
Huh?
What did I say to you that was offensive?
Tom, you have been on this council for numerous years, and I've asked you to come out to that park numerous years, so you have to see what's going on. You constantly tell me I'm not part of the city, my address is city.
Constantly, I told you that once. That's, you're, you're exaggerating. I said it one time. I said, you keep coming up here, you know, and we're, we're spending our time, an inordinate amount of time every meeting, and you, and you're not a taxpayer in the city. But we do honor what you have to say.
Why did you wreck my yard?
I didn't wreck your yard.
Well, the city did.
We're in the middle of the city.
But why, why are you saying I'm the, I'm, I'm guilty of something?
You're the one that keeps throwing it out there that I'm not part of the city, so that's why I picked you.
One time, April.
I don't hear Kirby say that, I don't hear David say that, I've not heard-
One time.
No.
And it's, is it true or is it not true? You are not a taxpayer in the city.
That doesn't matter.
You know, when you take up-
That, that hurts too.
But when you take up an inordinate amount of time out of a council meeting to discuss the same thing over and over and over again.
Because you're not fixing the issue.
We're not fixing the issue.
Not in the city.
It's not my issue.
You know, we have engineering meetings once a month, and our engineering meeting for this month is tomorrow. I didn't even talk to Jared about what his results were from, from his visit out there. That was gonna be a topic of conversation for tomorrow. So your expectation is that soon as somebody's out there, the next day, you know, fifty workmen are gonna show up and take care of the problem, and that's not true.
Well, I, I, I just wanted information, like, what is gonna happen now that you guys have been out there? Did I ask you to bring a crew out right now? I mean, I'm fine with waiting until next year, I just need a plan.
And, and we're gonna get that plan, and I-
Yeah, well, that's not where Tom's going with this, so I'm trying to prove my-
He, Tom does wanna get this solved.
I wanna get it resolved, believe me, I hate talking about this every single meeting.
And let's resolve it, but you are very hostile.
I agree, and we're gonna, we're gonna get it taken care of, and-
So how, how do we complain about how we've been treated by city staff? How does that get a personnel meeting to deal with it?
Jessica, is there something that she needs to, like, fill out, do, paperwork?
I will find out.
Thank you, Jessica.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Michelle.
Sorry, you just reminded me of something. So when you talk about, when she talked about how they were treated by, um, staff members and that you would take care of it in a personnel committee meeting, you know, 'cause, and it's gotta be private or whatever, are you gonna take care of it the same way you guys took care of the, um, city employee who had made comments in regards to a former employee and as when I was mayor, and I was willing to take care of those issues, but Councilmember Marzilik shooed me out of that discussion, and you, Kirby, coming in as mayor, were to take care of said issues, staffing issues, and if, we need to clarify, I don't wanna state names, obviously. But, um, you guys were supposed to take care of some issues back in December, when a former employee left and made some serious accusations in regards to a current employee. I believe Tom stated that it's kind of water under the bridge, and said employee was gone, so they didn't really need to take care of anything. So is that, is that when? I'm trying to keep this all under wraps as to who the person was, but-
Any accusations that get made, get looked into, and both sides of the story are heard.
Okay.
And when there's only two sides to the story that are very different, is, it's pretty tough to pick one side or the other when that's all you have to go from.
So when the accusations were made, and it's hard to pick, you know, who to go from, instead, what happened, there's, those were some serious accusations that were made by the former employee. We are all very well aware of said behavior by a current employee. But instead, what you guys chose to do was promote that employee and give them a raise. So is that what's gonna happen now with said behavior from Public Works Director? He can treat people poorly, and now we'll get a raise and a promotion?
We are not gonna address on a public forum what we handled in a personnel, private meeting.
But, I don't know.
Then why are you, uh-
And you don't discuss it.
Then why are you saying, you know, we don't, we don't report to you, Michelle?
Ray County Sheriff's Office.
Wait, 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 as a taxpayer-
To you personally, we don't have to tell you everything that's going on in a personnel committee. Come on.
There's supposed to be minutes from that, I haven't seen him, but I will request them.
Ray County Sheriff's Office.
Mr. Mayor, council members, uh, no training crime outside of, we had a couple of criminal damages to properties that occurred in the middle of July over a couple of days, involving black spray paint. Uh, we have been providing extra patrol to the parks and the Montrose Elementary School, that behavior has stopped. Outside of that, um, recommendations, make sure to berlock in our vehicles, close in our garages. Like you brought up, uh, two times ago, make sure, if you have your garage door open, it's a good idea just to bring it in so people can't access that. Any questions or comments or concerns for us?
So there's been no new tattooing with spray paint and, and any of that?
There was three that occurred, I don't remember the dates offhand-
Yep.
In the middle of July. Since that, nothing has occurred with black spray paint. So that's, that appears to not be ongoing at this time.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
Thanks for coming on National Night Out, by the way.
City Council.
See, uh, council meeting, uh, toured the Herzog property and National Night Out.
Um, City Council and National Night Out.
City Council, uh, meeting with the engineer at the Herzog property and National Night Out.
Council-
During meeting, National Night Out, and beyond yellow ribbon.
Uh, City Council and National Night Out. Fire Department.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor, uh, in your packet is the July activity report. Uh, pretty busy month, twenty-three total calls. Uh, some acknowledgements that I'd just like to kinda throw out there. Um, we got a donation from the United Farmers Co-op, um, in the amount of two thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and six cents to our Relief Association. Um, they actually reached out to me earlier this year saying, hey, would you like some free money? Sure, why not? Had me fill out a form and said, oh, it might be two, three hundred bucks, and that's what came, so. Um, a special thank you to all the firefighters for the hard work that they did during our hose testing, which we did this last month. Um, we tested eight thousand six hundred and fifty feet of hose, saving thousands of dollars to our budget, rather than having a company come out and do it, and then we still have work to do. So we do that all in-house, it takes us about eight to ten hours on a Tuesday, and a lot of sweat and some tears, usually, so. Um, and then also, a thank you to Jeff Holt for his three years, three months, and four days of service to the fire department. Any questions on the activity report? It never is. Um, the next item, uh, just a discussion topic, and, um, so every two years, per our policy, that's, uh, through the city with the fire department, um, the fire chief position comes due. So we need to set a date for when applications are due, and then, um, figure out what to do if more than one person is silly enough to take the job. So.
And restarts again on the first of January?
Yep. So my thought would be have them do, um, Friday, September third, at eleven o'clock, turned into Jess. And then that next week, if we have to, we can figure out the process to move forward, how that process would look. Um, and then make the selection. Maybe that council meeting or the October council meeting, if we have to do an interview.
First Friday in September, possible interviews to follow if more than one, and the decision to follow
Yeah.
At the next meeting after interviews, if they're taken place.
We'll see what, how it plays out and stuff, we don't wanna really put a whole lot of work into it if it's just one person who's gonna apply, so. Um, but we've had more than one person apply in the past, and then we just roll it on from week to week, essentially, and make it, it's a, usually a pretty quick process, so. So if you guys are cool with September third, I'll post it in our department, and-
Okay. Any motion for that, or is that just for your internal business?
I think that's just for my internal business, just so there's some consensus and stuff, so. I'll get that posted, and Jess will see some applications probably, so. Um, that's all I have for the fire department, unless anybody else has any questions.
Leadership Management?
So, um, it's starting again, as we can all look and see in, um, the world of what's happening. Um, I'm not gonna put the cart before the horse, but, um, things could happen within a moment's notice, we're starting to see mandates coming from judges and, um, governors and other public officials, um, essentially, again, politicizing this, um, animal of COVID-nineteen, so. More so, just kind of be aware that things could change at a moment's notice. I hope and pray that they don't on a daily basis, and I don't pray that often, but I do when this stuff comes up. Um, it's a it's a very delicate issue. Um, I've been in contact with Jess and Wendy and the rest of the city staff of how things are going at City Hall, what things would look like if the community center, if we have to start closing things again, how that might look. If you look at the history of last year, um, during the summertime, we thought we were all out and done with this, and then October hit, and that's when we really went into lockdown, um, for the second time. Um, I don't know that it would be as long as a process as it has been in the past, looking at some of the numbers from different countries and how they're going into this Delta variant and then going out of it. Um, but it's hitting people hard and it's hitting people fast, but then they're putting rules and regulations in again, and then it's going down, um, pretty quick. So, again, hopefully, nothing comes of it, but I'd rather be semi-prepared and have you guys a little in the loop if, for some reason, we have to, I have to go up to City Hall, and we have to have that hard discussion of going back to hey, appointments only, or we have to start wearing masks in there or something like that. It's gonna be one of those things that's just gonna happen, and then we'll deal with it at the next council or workshop or something like that, so. Again, I hope it doesn't come to that, that's my sincere hope, but a lot of cities are already starting to get back on the bandwagon, unfortunately, so. Questions, comments, concerns, thoughts?
You don't wanna know my thoughts.
Uh, no, I don't, I know what your thoughts are, I can already see them.
Planning and zoning?
Um, we had a memo submitted by the developers to continue, um, to the September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one city council meeting, because they are not ready with some of their final plat stuff, so. Um, a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to accept the continuation request from the Overston addition.
Second.
Further discussion. Councilmember Solars.
Hi.
Councilmember Marzilik.
Hi.
Councilmember Andrioff.
Hi.
Councilmember Paradise.
Hi.
I'll vote yes, motion passes five zero. City Engineer?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, in your packet, the first item from me this evening is related to the twenty twenty-one downtown improvement phase one project. Uh, on the twenty-ninth, we received twelve bids, uh, for the project, that's a great number of bids, a lot of interest in the project. There's a bit of the rain in, in the bid, but ultimately, the low bidder that supplied the low bid was Keekley Underground from Kimball, Minnesota. The bid they supplied was in the amount of five million, one hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven dollars and thirty-four cents. I did include an abstract in your packets for that. Ultimately, uh, we reviewed the bid, the information that they've submitted, and have enclosed a resolution to award that contract to Keekley Underground.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid from Keekley Underground. Hold on a second. Further discussion. Councilmember Paradise.
Hi.
Councilmember Andrioff.
Hi.
Councilmember Marzilik.
Hi.
Councilmember Solars.
Hi.
I'll vote yes, motion passes five zero.
Just for quick, just to know, more to do about-
The resolution, twenty twenty-one, yes. Sorry, I forgot to say that part.
Second item in your packet this evening is related to, uh, a discussion that we had a few months ago, about this new magazine, I think everybody has the background information on, uh, the values that were obtained from the Department of Health. Ultimately, uh, as we discussed with Council, the memo in your packet ultimately identifies short, medium, and long-term options to pursue any, anything associated with that. I think the short-term, term options, uh, we've discussed in the past, and I think are being implemented in various forms, whether that be bottled water, filters, things of that nature. Uh, a medium-term, term, and ultimately, this is based on, on timing and duration of how long it's gonna take to, uh, to move forward. Medium-term option that we identified is potentially identifying another well location. Really, the only concern with that is the most recent well that we drilled, um, also had elevated levels, and the, and the idea behind an additional well would be so that the water could be blended, so, to reduce the overall concentration. So that was a, a medium-term option, the longer-term options, um, are related to a feasibility report for potential water treatment. I outlined, outlined a couple, uh, different types of facilities, and things of that in the memo, uh, but ultimately, it's a a report that would identify how the, how all of the city would move forward if a facility was pursued. Um, so ultimately, at this point, the staff continues to, uh, collaborate with Minnesota Department of Health and, uh, monitor or conduct monthly testing. And the test results have remained stable, and there's been no changes aside from the information that was provided a few months ago, so. Really, that's the update, um, and, and options from the report, obviously, Council must make the decision, and, um, I just wanted to outline those potential options and have them available for, uh, future staff direction.
How was the process of looking for a new well? Can you give me the layman's version of how we go, how we would go about that?
Yeah, so ultimately- Yeah, so ultimately, uh, the geology, the records that are available would be reviewed. Um, we look at the well logs from the most recent well, previous well and try to identify an area within the city, uh, where there's adequate water. Oftentimes that involves a test well. It's drilled first. Uh, we drill a test, or contract, we drill the test well. We determine the pumping rate that we depend on pain from the well, which is one of the important key components because you want your rate adequate to shape for the, uh, flux of drilling the well. And then the water samples received from the test well could be tested and then determine, uh, their levels of the various things that are found in the water.
Okay. That option you are not as helpful for though, correct? Because of the last well that was drilled?
So, correct. Um, as you look at wells 2, 4, 5 and 6, the, the levels, and again, it goes back to the geology of the area, not only Montrose, but neighborhood communities that are dealing with the same thing, um, unfortunately there's, there are elevated levels of manganese naturally occurring in soils rather around here. So that, uh, I think if that was an option come forward and a use for two, I, I think you'd carefully consider that in my opinion.
I think we should look at a feasibility report before we kind of go down any, either of those two options. The, the range of possible treatment is very, very wide. Eight to 25 million is a very large range. But I, I think that we should do a feasibility report and see what that kind of tells us.
You have to make a motion for that then.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to seek a water treatment feasibility report to fully explore the water quality needs and wants of the community.
I will second.
Further discussion on the motion? Councilmember Solars.
Hi.
Councilmember Marzlik.
Hi.
Councilmember Andrioff.
Hi.
Councilmember Paradise.
Hi.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes 5-0. Any other updates?
Uh, just the last item, uh, I had as an update. We are continuing to work with the contractor that conducted the 2020 pavement maintenance improvement. Uh, if you recall, council authorized a change order to renew the City Hall parking lot. Contractor was on site, uh, began milling, found nine inches of bituminous and, uh, that was a significant deviation from their original, uh, plan. And so they are currently identifying the cost of, um, taking care of that. And as soon as we get it, um, we'll, we'll be bringing it to council for approval and authorization to either seek another contractor or move forward with, uh, with the repairs to the City Hall parking lot. So that, uh, process is going underway.
They were expecting like four to five inches, right? And they ended up getting twice that amount?
That's correct. So ultimately it was all bituminous altered clay. So there was no aggregate to shape and it's a drainage issue or anything like that, so. When they discovered that, that's when they... That's all I had this evening.
Thank you.
Sure.
How the works?
Well, council, you're all aware of our water restrictions. Minnesota DNR put us under, uh, water restrictions. Most of Minnesota's in a drought this year. And the month of August, we're supposed to drop our usage by 121,000 gallons a day is what our goal is, what they want us to hit. We're moving down, but we're not there yet. So last week we sent out a letter that everybody will get explaining that we have to do this and what the fines are and... Anybody got any questions on, I mean, it's, it's all over the news and...
There's nothing we could do that came down from the DNR.
Right, yeah, I mean, we're not doing it. I had a lady call me up today and wanted to know if I was going to pay for fertilizer on her lawn. And I said, no, I said, we're mandated. She told me off and hung up on me. Said she was going to water anyway.
So what happens if we don't hit that, that by the...
We might pay a premium on, on our water, which we pay the DNR to pump water out of the ground every year.
So essentially if we don't hit that number, they're basically going to fine us for not hitting the number?
They could fine us or charges a premium on the water extra we pumped.
What was that number again, Wayne?
121,000 gallons per day.
We have to drop that amount?
Yes.
What's the amount we need to be at?
Uh, we need to be at 262,000 gallons a day. In the month of June, we're at 383,000 gallons a day. That would be the 121 we have to drop to hit that goal. And it's all averaged off our July usage or our January usage. Our lowest pumping of the year is in January. And that's what they base this off. That we have to be 50% above that is all we can go. And that puts us at the 262.
So basically we can only go 50% of what we used in January?
In January, yes. That's what they want us to do. And we're trying to hit that goal. Questions?
Any further updates?
Yeah, Porus Creek Park is done. It's all ready to go. Once we, this fall, hopefully we'll plant some grass around it. We get a little more moisture. Skating Link is just about done. So we're moving right along. And yes, we got everything mowed in the city now. And we got a little moisture, so we'll keep up on that too. Anybody have any questions for me?
All right, uh, no old business, uh, new business, community center floor scrubber replacement.
Um, the floor scrubber that's used here at the community center does need to be replaced. Um, it was purchased in 2003 for $3,385. Um, Wendy had it serviced by Hilliard, the company it was purchased from, and they suggested we, uh, replace it. It's wearing out and just not worth repairing it anymore. Attached is the quote in your packet, um, from Hilliard for a new scrubber at a cost of $4,364.83. Scrubber is 20 inches wide instead of only 17. Um, she researched online for other companies that sell scrubbers and found two that were compatible to the one from Hilliard. Um, there was one from Uline Milwaukee, uh, for $5,000 and one from Global Industrial Milwaukee, Wisconsin for $4,399. Um, at this time, Wendy's asking for a motion to approve the purchase of a scrubber for the community center from Hilliard at a cost of $4,364.83. There are sufficient funds in the community center fund balance for this purchase.
After it was serviced, is it currently working now or is it out of working order? Is that something that we can trade in at all or, or try to sell or...
Yeah, we can check on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if we can get something out of it, I think it'd be good.
Yeah.
And that might not be the case because it is rather old, so I'm not sure.
It is fairly old too, so.
Thoughts?
This money will be coming right out of the community center fund balance.
Well, I'll make a motion to go ahead and replace it for, uh, with Hilliard 436483, providing Wendy does make a call and find out if we can get anything for our old one.
I will second.
Further discussion, the motion? Councilmember Solars.
Hi.
Councilmember Marzlik.
Hi.
Councilmember Andrioff.
Hi.
Councilmember Paradise.
Hi.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes 5-0. Upcoming meetings, uh, Partner X canceled, planning on zoning this Wednesday at 7:00 PM. EDA is the 17th at 12:00 PM at City Hall or Zoom. Uh, city council training with the League of Minnesota Cities, August 24th, 4:00 PM. Council workshop, August 30th, 4:00 PM. And the regular city council meeting on September 13th, 7:00 PM. Acknowledgements.
I'd like to thank all the community members that were out and about for National Night Out. It's good to meet new people and have the conversations with them and get to hear what they had to say. So thanks for letting us come over.
Yeah, I also go along those lines. Uh, thanks to the church for putting on the National Night Out and everybody who participated in that, the different groups around town that were all there and, uh, the residents and neighborhoods that invited us out to their neighborhood. Uh, just to kind of meet them and answer any questions they had. I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Councilmember Solars.
Hi.
Councilmember Marzlik.
Hi.
I'll vote yes. Councilmember Andrioff. Councilmember Paradise. Motion passes 5-0. We're adjourned.